Brandy, can you get in the pledge?
No.
We got five o'clock. Let's call this meeting to order. Stand for the pledge.
I would like to introduce the Senator Scott of the United States of America and to deliver my life for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Greg Scott.
Here.
Mark Serbrot.
Present.
Ron Vaughn.
Present.
Brad Newbecker.
Present.
Danny David.
Here. Any additions or questions?
We will approve the agendas presented. Support.
We have a motion, Commissioner Scott, with support from Commissioner Serbrot to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three, review of the minutes. September 23rd, 2021, regular meeting minutes.
I looked over the minutes of the meeting and I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Vaughn to approve the regular meeting minutes from September 23rd, 2021. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item four, public comment on agenda items only. Is there any public comment? Any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? No public comment. Item five, we have correspondence. See any?
One from Delta County.
Oh geez.
Medical health service. CEO.
I guess I.
Motion to.
I'll read that later. So them have been received and filed. Item six, public hearing fiscal year 2022 budget.
I'll open. I'll make a motion. We'll open the public hearing.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Serbrot to open the public hearing related to fiscal year 2022 budget.
Ask for comments.
Is there any discussion, anything on the fiscal year 2022 budget? Any comments from the public? In the room, is there any comments on the budget? Anybody on the phone with comments?
A move that we can close the public hearing. Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Serbrot to close a public hearing for the fiscal year 2022 budget. A roll call vote on that?
I don't know. Yeah.
Why not?
Mark Serbrot.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker. Danny David.
Yes.
Greg Scott.
Yes.
Item seven, action on consent calendar. I think we should go forward with each one of these individually.
I agree.
Item eight, new business resolution to approve general appropriations for fiscal year 2022. This resolution is sponsored by the county administrator. The Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act, Public Act 621 of 1978 requires that each local unit of government annually adopt a balanced budget for all required funds. This budget is presumed to fund those activities of the county mandated by law at a serviceable level. Once adopted, no expenditure may be incurred in access of the individual adopted budgets without first amending the budget pursuit to the budgetary procedures established by the Board of Commissioners. A position allocation list included with budget limits the number of permanent employees who can be employed in all departments, offices, and in the courts. Certain positions contained in the position allocation list are only approved contingent upon the county received the budgeting revenues. In the event that such anticipated outside funding is not received, those positions will be moved from the approved position allocation list. In addition to the budget, Michigan statute also requires a general appropriations resolution to set forth the total number of mills of add borem property taxes to the levied and the purposes for which the millages to be levied. Tim, do you have?
I point out to the commission appropriation resolution was slightly modified today. I talked with the utilization director, Randy Booth, and these millages were subject to a small rollback. It amounted to fifty-seven ten thousandths of a mil, which is a very small rollback, but a rollback nevertheless. So those updated figures are in the draft that's in front of you. Two other things to point out on the veterans. We had a conversation at the last meeting about whether that millage would be levied. It's still in here, but if you choose not to, we will revise the resolution to put those at zero. And based on conversation at the last meeting, the road patrol millage was reduced to half a mil rather than a full mil. Again, following discussion tonight, if you decide a different number, we will simply amend this document before it's submitted for final on our webpage. Everything else in the budget that you see, you have access to those on the iPads. If you had any questions, they're all relatively unchanged once you've seen over the last, I think, week and a half, whatever it was that put those final documents out there. That's it. The rest of this is standard language, talks about what happens with the convention and facility tax, and these are all statutory items, so they're nothing that you can amend. It's just we want to make sure that in the resolution, the prove compliance with the various statutes.
We make a motion. The resolution be adapted as presented.
As presented.
As presented. Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Serbrot to approve the resolution to approve general appropriations for fiscal year 2022.
I'll second.
We have a support from Commissioner Scott. Discussion?
Now we can discuss.
Well, I think, I think because of the the discussion we had with veterans last week, I think he recommended that we zero that out for one year. I'll go along with that.
I've had, I've been contacted by six to eight veterans in the last few days. We are underserving the veterans in this county currently. Non wartime vets are not being serviced in this county. They're only servicing wartime veterans. And the ability is there for them to take the service, non combat veterans.
Say that again.
If you're a veteran and you were, and you were in combat, if you weren't during a period of combat, they're not servicing. If you were a peacetime veteran, veterans, our veterans office is not servicing.
Because?
They've chosen not to, but the money's there, they can do it.
So did you reach out to Jeff and ask?
I, I talked to Eric.
Okay.
Jeff was busy when I went in. Eric David seems to think that we can provide some services to non wartime vets.
Okay, so they're going to expand the services.
They could. The ability's there in Eric's opinion. So like I said, Jeff was in with somebody when I was there and I popped in and talked to Eric.
Jeff on the call?
Ten fifteen minutes. I was actually there on dual business, but that was one of the issues.
I can't see a couple of names.
So go ahead with your.
That was, that's a, I, you know, I mean, I'd like to see something on there to allow them to be able to take and provide expanded services if they can.
They're going to expand them. I don't see any problem.
Well, if they're unable to, then, you know, I just.
My question is.
I brought it up because of the fact that, like I said, I was contacted by different veterans that expressed, and I, Brad and I talked a little bit before the meeting. I think Brad's had some conversations in regards to the same thing, so.
Yeah, I think that if it is true that they can serve those veterans, I think we should probably leave that money alone.
I'll agree with that if they're going to.
But with regard to MSU extension, I feel like we could get away from that this year. Drop that to zero and then on the road patrol, I think point two five would be sufficient to get us through next year. My opinion.
As far as the veterans, I mean, I agree with you. The last thing we want to do is cut services. Are they underserved? Absolutely. However, do we want to continue to, to have this amount of money sitting there? Jeff, are you on the phone? Do you have any access to him?
I don't think I do.
I mean, he would be the one to answer our questions really.
Definitely.
I agree with you wholeheartedly, but if, if he's saying these services aren't available.
If they can't provide it.
And there's enough money there to at least continue.
I got no issue with it, but like I said, I was, you know, veterans reached out to me and I'm just bringing their concerns.
Understandable. Any other discussion? On any other millages?
Are we reaching out to Jeff?
He's, Tim's working on it.
All right. I don't have his contact here. I think the only number I have for him is his office number. I don't think I have.
He would be on the emergency call list, correct?
Yes.
Can somebody grab it, please? This is important. Any other discussion?
Commissioner. Excuse me, this is Eric David on the phone. I don't even know if I'm allowed to speak at this or not. But I would like to say my piece. I do think the veterans of Ogama County have been underserved. I do think we could use this money in many different ways. I've only been there three months now. I was just informed about a month ago about the the amount of funds that were sitting there and frankly, it made my heart drop into my stomach. So I would like the chance. I don't want to overstep anybody, but I'm, I'm here. I came from the state level doing it for three years. I think that we have a very, very good opportunity here to make this one of the best veterans offices around in our region at all. So I, I do not agree with not leveling, levying that millage this year. I would like a chance at at seeing what we can do to provide more services to our veterans. That's, that's my say in it.
And I appreciate that. We're going to give Jeff a call real quick. We've got his contact.
While they're waiting on that, MSU, basically the discussion we had there a week ago, it sounded like they were setting pretty good. So I can, I can agree with Brad. We can, I think we can drop the MSU.
I got a copy of that millage Tim sent to me. I asked him for it and I just wanted to read it. I don't know if you guys know what that millage says. I guess I'm not sure if you want to hear it, but show the limitations upon the total amount of general ad borem taxes which may be levied upon all real and personal property for all purposes in any one year under Article nine, section, 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 section six of the Michigan Constitution, be increased in the county of Ogama, Michigan to point one four six five mils per thousand dollars of taxable value of all such property for a period of eight years, being 2018 through 2025, inclusive for all the purpose of paying cost of operating 4H youth programs in Michigan State University Services in the county of Ogama, thereby raising it in the first year an estimated one hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Pointing out. Sorry, I was listening to that. I wasn't hearing all the conversation, but to not levy that millage would put that fund in a deficit for this year. It would be a deficit of roughly half of the budget that we programmed for the expenses. So I would suggest that if you're going to reduce that to not reduce it by more than half, that should be sufficient to carry over what we proposed in the budget. But it would mean no fund balance for that fund after this year.
What?
I think they need to have fund balance. Something, I wouldn't want to cut it that close to no fund balance. And it's not going to, projected fund balance is not a huge dollar amount, quite frankly. Sixty-one thousands of chunk of change, but that's basically what one employee with benefits.
The projected revenue of that's a hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and dollars, four hundred and one dollars. And they had a balance fund. I have, what was it, fifty-three thousand, fifty-six thousand?
Such as.
It just, and I explained my views last time.
Tim, you need this?
I probably, I had it here somewhere.
I've actually got it here. I just got to flip back.
I, I feel like, especially reading over that millage, it's it's again collecting monies for services that have not been provided this year, unfortunately for some things that were out of their hands related to this pandemic, but um and then to not know where they stood as far as from a balanced perspective was quite disturbing as well.
Mr. Booth, does some input that might help us?
When MSU extension worked on that budget for the eight years, they anticipated they would be getting a little bit extra in the beginning, that their costs may go up proportionally higher than the intended revenues. And so I'm going to study that over the eight-year period they come up with. You know, I don't know where their expenses were last year, but they they may have some surplus at the beginning through that process over the eight years.
Just lay this all out. At the end of the last fiscal year, their, their fund balance was fifty-one thousand, four eighty-one. Based on what we saw with projections on fiscal year 21, the projection was an additional twenty-five thousand going in after this year. And again, that's just a projection. That's, we'll have all the actuals in likely after tomorrow. That would give them a projected fund balance at the end of 21 at seventy-six, four eighty-one. The proposed budget would use fifteen thousand, two thirty-two of that.
I would like to cut that in half. And again, it's for services that haven't been provided. That probably is out of their hands. I understand that. I respect that, but um especially reading that 4H in this, in this millage. And again, I think we can revisit this next year. Hopefully think we're in a different place. Um, but I don't foresee that over the next couple of months. So.
An update. Jeff is not answering.
Well, thanks for the update. Any, any input? Commissioner Scott?
Am I looking at the numbers? I can probably go off the MSU. Yeah. As far as, as far as the road patrol, I think that fifty percent is, is good enough.
Mr. Chair.
Please.
I see Julie's on the call. We'll get some input from her perspective if we.
We can. I think we already heard her perspective last week and I mean, sure.
I mean, if she's got something to add from last week.
If she would like to, she emailed me. She did email me this week.
Okay.
But yeah, Julie, do you have something you'd like to add?
Yeah. I appreciate the situation that you're in and I, I do know that services were very different last year, but services were not nonexistent. We still had clubs meeting virtually. We still were supporting youth and volunteers, and that's just in our 4H programs, and we still were giving service to the community through our other programs, including our support for agriculture. And many of those staff that support agriculture in Ogama County don't have offices in Ogama County. That is something that is bought into when you create the memorandum of agreement with Michigan State University Extension. And we're supporting every different kind of production in the state of Michigan through agriculture. I don't know that the same conditions or the same, there's a correlation between us creating, having a fund balance of this much and and also being, the implication being that we didn't deliver on our services. In fact, we delivered programs to a number of people in Ogama County last year, and we continue to, to want to increase our services. And also, when I look at these budget numbers, I see that the projection for revenue was much lower than what has been collected so far. And I worry that if there is some sort of a housing bubble or a change in property tax that happens rapidly, that we would be caught unawares and that we might, that we might have a problem going into a deficit. And I wouldn't want to be in a position where MSU extension was creating more of a fiscal challenge for the county. You know, we, we do the best that we can to be a good steward of funds. I will admit to a general level, probably more austere than we've needed to be in our spending. We have, we have funds that we get from the university to support our programs. We, we have spent money from those university funds rather than spending county funds. And as far as my lack of awareness, I will work very rapidly to make up the difference in my own knowledge and education about these funds. And I know that you have a difficult decision to make and, and I appreciate the opportunity to address you all this evening. I would ask that you levy the millage as it stands. I believe we are serving the people of Ogama County to the best of our ability, and we continue to want to do that and do a better job of, and increase our numbers. I can't make a guarantee about that because I do have a new staff person in 4H. I don't think it's fair to her that I give you some sort of a guarantee that as she's building relationships, it wouldn't necessarily be a fair statement to say that I can say we're going to double our numbers or we're going to do, you know, something in a, in an order higher. But even in just the two weeks that she's been on staff, we've met with volunteers, we've had an open house, we're introducing, we had families come to our open house, express interest in starting clubs and getting their youth involved in our clubs. We're excited about the future and the coming year, and we're going to meet in person as much as we can, and we're going to meet in person as safely as we can. And we'll meet virtually if we need to, because we're committed to doing the work serving the people of Ogama County. Thank you for the opportunity to address you.
Thank you. Jeff? Jeff? Jeff from Veterans? He's trying to get on. Jeff, are you there? You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
All right. Yeah, I just, I was at the vets. I just got out.
So we had some questions on the millage.
Okay.
Um, over the past week, there has been a couple of us commissioners that were reached out to from various veterans in the county with concerns related to this millage and monies. If, is there more services, Jeff? Do you have the ability to provide more services in this county?
Such a, I, such as an example, I'm not, I'm not, it depends on what they're looking for. I mean, I'm not sure what services they're what the question, you know, what the question is. What, what services are we, are they looking for? As far as.
Do you feel like you have adequate resources to serve the veterans in Ogama County?
I, I think the one thing that they could use is a transportation program, but that's, you know, that requires resources and that requires people, and we just don't have the volunteers for a volunteer driver program. The DAV used to have a program that they had. They had two vehicles donated to their, their organization and they had a donation that was donated and all that money ran out and unfortunately the vehicles there. I, I think a lot of veterans are looking for ride programs to get down to the VA hospital.
I, I think the last thing we want to do is cut any type of services for this county. Um, but we want to make sure that if we do go forward with levy in this millage, that these monies are going to be utilized.
Well, exactly. And I, and we have that, that, that balance of that fund. I mean, that's originally that was designed, should the millage not pass, that would allow us to operate at least for the time being until we could pass another millage. I mean, that's, that was the original intent. That was started back in 2009 when we, when we got this millage through. Of course, the original tent of the millage was a fund to people, but with healthcare costs doubling at that time, the millage didn't, was not able to support two full-time veterans officers in there. The only reason why we built up that millage is because I myself have provided my own medical. The county does not pay for my medical. And, and when we brought Mark in, it was the same way. So that's where a balance, that's where the most of this money has come from, is that we have not utilized those funds for healthcare, which would, you know, as you're aware of, would eat up a whole bunch. I think it was running about fifteen thousand a person. Is what the overall cost is.
One of the commissioners was, is brought to their attention that the services in Ogama County are for
wartime veterans only, that we don't service veterans that have only served in peacetime. Is that correct, Jeff?
Did you hear that?
See that, we help, we help any veteran, okay? It doesn't matter whether they're wartime or pe, or wartime or peacetime. What, what is that's being referred to is the, the two fourteen fund millage that you're looking at, that one tenth of a mil that was, it's actually one twenty-fifth, but Public Act two fourteen authorizes the county to levy up to one tenth of a mil to assist wartime veterans. That's the only one that has a specific, specific requirement for wartime veterans. I, we use that money. A veteran comes in with a propane, you know, his propane's empty and he can't get help from DHS. If he's a peacetime veteran, I can't use two fourteen funds for, to assist that veteran. That's why we've now established by donation, thanks to the American Legion Post three seventy, that's got it started, or rather not three seventy, it's three seventy riders. They donated, I think it was a little over sixteen, seventeen hundred dollars to help us set up a peacetime veterans fund so that we could help those peacetime veterans in an emergent need such as propane, electric bill, rent, the same thing that we do for our wartime veterans. Now, that's, that's probably what's being referred, referred to as far as wartime and peacetime. We help any veteran. In all honesty, if you're a veteran and you come to my office, we're going to help you the best if we can. If we can't financially do anything, emergency wise, we refer you out to the veterans organizations themselves. Does that answer the question?
Yes, it does. I'm sure that's what they were talking about was that assistance that like propane.
So Jeff, I, I guess going forward, what are you recommending? I'm going to sneeze. What are you recommending that we do? Obviously, there's, there's quite a surplus there. We do not want any services.
We're not cutting any services. No, it's not going to cut any services. What we provide is still going to continue on. The, the, whether you levy, again, you have a, you have our operational millage, that's the one that has a significant balance still in it. Okay? That one right now, if we didn't levy, if, if we operate at, at the level we're going, we could probably go two years right now without levying a millage and still have money left over. The two fourteen is a different story. I, I don't know what happened this past year. I, you know, I don't know if it's that extra money that was being given out to our veterans. Not just veterans, but everybody. The extra three hundred dollars a week, but our soldiers relief has was very little this year. I, I, I don't know the number. I don't have the number in front of me, but I, I want to say it was roughly less than five thousand dollars that we've provided to assist wartime veterans. Up until, like I said, the other part was the peacetime veterans fund. We just started that one, so I, I won't get into that as far as what that's, that hasn't done anything yet. But, but as far as wartime veterans, it, it's, our usage is down. When I first started back in 2008, we were almost eighteen thousand dollars a year for assistance, but that was money that was. we were almost eighteen thousand dollars a year for assistance, but that was money that was provided out of the general fund. And then I forget when we did the, the millage itself for the one twenty-fifth mil. And at that time, you guys were, I mean, the county was paying for the emergency relief and the markers and the flags, which the two fourteen millage now takes care of. And I think we project like thirty-five thousand for that one a year. Off the top of my head. Again, I don't have those papers in front of me, so I'm kind of going from memory. I think the next millage is due in two thousand, we'll have to run it on the, we collect our last millage in February of two thousand twenty-four, so this one runs through twenty-three.
So what do you think about holding on the levying the Act two one four in, in, in passing on the other?
Well, we can pass on the operational millage. I have no problem with passing on the operational millage. That won't, that will not affect anything in as far as what we do in the office. We still provide the services in the office. The two fourteen, I, I think there's, I want to say there's thirty, thirty-five off the top of my head. You probably have the numbers in front of you, what the current balance is. Are we going to expense thirty-five thousand in the next year? No, I, we never have. We, we, most we've ever done is a little over seventeen, almost eighteen thousand is all we've ever, and that was back in two thousand nine, two thousand eight timeframe. Ever since then, we, we basically, we, we make, we have our veterans utilize state funds first, such as DHS and NMSCA and all them, especially during the heating season. That's where a lot of the funding is coming from. We utilize those services and then we, when we revert back over to the county funds, if, if we have to. Committee is the one that drives all, they're the ones that say yea or nay. It's, it's not me that says yea or nay to these grants. But any, any veteran that comes in with a, any, any wartime veteran that comes in with an emergent need, if, if that request is over two fifty, it automatically goes to my veterans committee for consideration.
Any input, guys?
Just to expand on what your plan is for non-war time veterans. Do you have any programs that you can expand out on there?
I, right now, the biggest need is what we've seen is the emergency grant. So unfortunately, when a, when a peacetime veteran comes around for emergen- I mean, with their, our office serves both peacetime and, and wartime. Like I said, the only time we get into whether a wartime or veteran or a peacetime veteran is really when they come in for emergency grants. And with the, the fund that we have set up, it allows the organizations to donate money. I've already in contact with, there's a group that operates out of Gladwin. They do fundraisers and I can't remember their name off the top of my head. But they do fundraisers annually and they've already been advised that we have the peacetime veterans program that is not funded anywhere. I was, we were talking, could we possibly use some of the operational millage to fund the peacetime veterans? I don't know if legally we can do that. I don't know.
I think that's something that we should look into, definitely. I mean, we've got a pretty good fund balance now right now, so I think it's something into. And obviously, if you, if we can utilize those funds to help those peacetime veterans that need that emergency assistance for heating or whatever, let's do it, you know?
Right. I did, I just don't know if legal, I'm not, I'm not sure because that, that's I'm just not sure the legality. I may, I imagine that's something that's been brought to You got it. Exactly. I just don't know.
So what are you thinking as far as these villages?
Hey, board, I can, board, this is Greg B. And I can get you that answer by Monday for you. And if you could just direct who I send the answer to, whether it be Tim or the, all of the board.
Thanks, Greg. What would you like to do with the village, Commissioner Sibrik?
I say drop the, the one that specifically earmarked that says veterans and then
The two fourteen?
The two fourteen?
The two fourteen is for, the two fourteen is used
War time, right?
Markers and flags.
Soldiers and sailors, right?
Soldiers and sailors relief, you got it. And, and like I said, I, I, I mean, you, you don't, I, you, you carry over the funds for that one. You're allowed to carry over the funds each year. So you're allowed under the two, public Act two fourteen, you're allowed to adjust that millage for that, that program because you, you're, you, you can carry, you carry over the balance, you know, you don't have to do something else. You're only allowed to use it for two fourteen. So you're allowed to carry over the balance and take into consideration. Like I said, I've been here since two thousand eight. We've never done more than eighteen thousand in a year. Again, because there's all these other pro, there's DHS and NMSCA and Michigan Veterans Trust Fund. Those are other programs that we utilize.
It also sounds like you have a new employee that's definitely eager and enthusiastic and
Yes. Yes, he is.
Commissioner Scott, I'll put in. You don't have one?
Director doesn't think he needs the money. The soldiers, sailor and soldiers fund is so small. It's not going to make that big a difference on the taxpayer. I mean, my, my bill for my house, I think was six bucks or something like that, four dollars or something. I mean, that's, I, I'm not, I'm not giving big relief to the taxpayer on that one. I see a big balance here on, on, on the other one, but maybe a portion of it, but but I gotta go by what the director tells me. I mean, if he doesn't think he needs the money.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Well, I kind of agree, opt out on the veterans, but like you say, the Act two fourteen is so small, I'd say just leave it like this.
Commissioner Newbaker?
I, I, I really don't see that the veterans, either one of them is going to make a whole lot of difference and I guess I'd be really interested to see if that money could be used in the future. So not knowing that right now, I really wouldn't want to cut that. I could split halfway on MSU. And, and just with road patrol, I'd like to see us go to point two five. But I can also live with a, with a half for now. Hopefully, we'll be able to get our services up and running as soon as possible and then we'll be able to go back to a full mil.
I was just asking for the veterans.
My only concern, my big concern is if we drop both of the veterans villages. People are going to look at their tax bill, they're not going to be, they're going to go, why aren't we supporting veterans? I'm, I'm afraid of the perception if we totally drop both of them.
Well, I think that's why we've talked to Jeff on two separate occasions, to verify that no services are going to get cut with this.
But I'm afraid the perception the public's going to be, because most people are not going to see our, our minutes, our discussion, they're just going to go, oh, we're going to look at their private tax bill and say, gee, Ogama County's not supporting their veterans anymore? I'm afraid that's going to be the perception and you know, perception is reality.
We have to educate.
So we do, but
And, and we can't predict the future either. We need more money in another year. What if something drastic happens and, and these veterans need our support?
So we revisit this, like we'll probably revisit every one of these next year. I'm all about continuing with the two fourteen and, and cutting the other, the other.
I guess.
Can I ask Mr.? What does the, what does the veterans millage bring in a year? You know, offhand?
Randy's sitting here too, Jeff.
I think it's projected at a hundred and eleven this year.
Hundred and eleven?
The op- no, um.
Randy, did you have something you wanted to say since you were asked?
The veterans millage that's levy, that was voted on, was voted on by the taxpayers. The Act two fourteen funds are levied by the county commissioners if they need it for the veterans. And so that's not something that the taxpayers vote for or do. That's solely on you. And if you see a need, you can levy up to one tenth of a mil. Right. And so you've been levying the point oh four millage for the last year.
Right. That's the two fourteen. Yes. Soldier sailor. I was wondering on the operating, the, the larger millage, it brings in a hundred and eleven projected, we're sitting on a three hundred thousand dollar fund balance. Nearly three times.
So do you have any input, Mr. Booth?
I do not. I'm not an elected official. It's a pretty high fund balance for any village.
Agreed. So are we all?
I have absolutely no problem with that and if we want to have the two fourteen to point zero two for now, I'm good with that.
Uh, one, one thing on the two fourteen, if, if the two fourteen also allows you to do two tenths of a mil, if a need ever such as rises where we just get overwhelmed with wartime veterans coming in for assistance. It's, it does allow you to levy up to two tenths of a mil overall, but it's generally a, a minimum is one tenth. Is what it has, has sta- stated, but up to one tenth. But in an emergency situation, you could levy up to two tenths.
I guess the question is, is this Mr. Commissioner Sibrik want to amend this?
I don't think we're there yet. Okay, so with the veterans, that's where we are there, not collecting on the operational millage? Commissioner Scott?
I just assumed here amended motion before I say anything.
Okay, so, and then the Act two one four? Okay. I mean, let's go back to the MSU extension. I, I am going to request that be cut in half. I would like to revisit that next year and see where we stand. We can always go back to the point one four six five. That's my stance on that. Your guys' opinions. Commissioner Vaughn?
I'll agree with the cut half.
Commissioner Newbaker? Commissioner Sibrik? Commissioner?
I am, I'm good with that, right? I was here when that all put in anyway. I, I'm good with that.
Okay, so the next we have the road patrol village. Right now we have a point five. My question, Tim, on that is with the, the balance that there is right now, is there enough to continue? Is there enough with the balance from, that was drawn last year to provide twenty-four hour service in the next year?
By itself? No. No. With what we projected that will be there at the end of this, so surplus at the end of twenty-one, my calculation is roughly three hundred fifty thousand on grant you, that's very conservative. It's probably going to be more than that. But that's the foundation I worked from. And then the proposal that you see in front of you right now works the budget at a half mil rate. And so with the surplus from this year, half mil for next year is enough to fund that village operation at one hundred percent beginning Friday. Now recall what I said at the last meeting. We know we're not going to be staffed at one hundred percent on Friday. We know that. We know that it probably will be thirty days before you even get another or even opportunity to bring somebody else on board. Realistically, we probably are looking at January, as the sheriff said, as the target month that we could possibly be at one hundred percent. Now, some of us are skeptical whether we could even meet that, but let's assume we do. There's roughly, you know, a quarter of the budget for roughly five positions that we know that we're not going to spend. So if we want to whittle it down past a half a mil, probably we'd be okay. Probably, probably that's going to be plenty. But again, if we suddenly get a surge of hiring and we have only staffed operation in the middle of November, while suddenly going less than a half a mil is not a good idea.
I, I printed off the village, oops, I'm sorry.
So if for some reason we go like gangbusters and we hire a bunch of people, is that ARPA money available?
Short answer to that is yes, it is. For first responders, that's one of the funding areas that they've already said is, is definitely eligible.
So we gotta, we've got to take you that if we need it.
You guys don't know what the village says? I printed it off because I wanted to see what it says. This is for the road patrol. Shall the county of Ogama, Michigan impose an increase in its levy of general ad taxes, which may be imposed for all purposes upon real and personal property in Ogama County as provided in Article nine, section, section of the Michigan Constitution of nineteen sixty-three as amended, which will result in an increase up to one mil, one dollar per a thousand dollars of taxable valuation of such properties as finally equalized for four years, two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty-three inclusive, which increased levy is estimated to raise up to eight hundred ninety-six thousand eighty-five in the first year to provide personnel, personnel, equipment and training necessary to enhance countywide road patrol services through Ogama County Sheriff's Office. I, I think by looking at that, some of that has been provided. We've got two people in the academy right now. We've got two Tahoe's sitting there. But I, I'm not comfortable collecting monies from, from individuals when services haven't been provided. I'm going to go with the point two five as, as long as I wanted to verify that we can continue the services and nothing's going to get cut or stopped and we can still move forward with, with going into this twenty-four hour road patrol. And then we can revisit this next year and, and hopefully we're, we're staffed and everything's good and, and we can go back to the one mil to provide these services. But I wanted to verify with you, Tim, that if we go to the point two five.
Well, Commissioner Newbaker made an excellent point. There, there is the funding, the safety net. Fortunate for us that it's there. If it turns out point two five isn't enough, you have a resource to go to if you need to supplement it.
Well, because we're, we're saying January, some of the commissioners have a different opinion, six months from then, as far as being up and running, we don't know, you know, so it's going to be really bad going back to the public in, in not having these services and not, obviously, none of us know when that's going to happen.
Again, I reiterate that surplus that I'm projecting for this year was very conservative. I know it's going to be more than what I projected here. I just don't know how much more. I settled on a number I was comfortable with. It's going to be more than what that is. So I I, I think with all things considered, if you went to point two five, that, that could be made to work.
Because this number eight hundred ninety-six thousand was much higher than that. It was nine.
It's going to be more than that this year because the, you know, taxable values have gone up.
Randy, do you have that information?
One a mil breaks. It was for fiscal twenty-one, twenty-two.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, we, our villages were, are assessed tax based proposals.
Opinions, Commissioner Sibrik?
I would be willing to meet you halfway at point three seven five. This is the negotiations team.
I'm not in favor of throwing anything less than half.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Well, I, I think, uh, Tim stated it well, that the ARPA money's there, um, as long as sheriff knows that he's not going to be.
Right.
You know, tied down to not being able to hire any folks and whatnot. I, I'd be willing to go to the two five oh. Like I say, as long as he's, he's not tied down and he, not restricted in any way.
Sheriff, would you like to speak?
Well, I, I feel I got the tools now that I can work with in regards to the, the negotiations, the gratification we have. Um, we've got some very good tools equipped and hiring, I, I think is going to be good for us. We got it to, indeed today, we punched that in, so we're hoping to hear from that. So I, I'm, I'm pretty hopeful that we'll be able to be on the run. So I would, I would prefer half. Tim, that's, that's my take on it, but my budget guy is right behind me. He could probably add to that.
And the sheriff?
Well, I concur with, with Tim's assessment at first. I think we'll, we'll let five, which is in that area where we're going to have to look for that saving. That two seven five. As long as if we do get fully staffed or one of the other things we are looking for is like body cameras and in car cameras. We just had a sales pitch from Guard Watch Monday that we're going to explore when all that happens. So that could be six dollars a expense that we can look at that would serve the public and the department. But I think we could, we could survive on a two five with that saving. Make the budget work. Hit the marks that we're, we're aiming for in January. You know, start moving forward, readdress this with realistic. The next discussion for the next one.
Thank you.
I agree with Paul on that. Um, as long as you got that safety net, um, and as those, those body cameras, those should be, um, that ARPA money should work for that as well, I would think. Um, so, uh, well, I'm just thinking, I, I mean, let's save our taxpayers some money here.
Absolutely.
We still have that safety net if we need it. And then, you know, slowly but surely we'll get up to, to full staff and then we'll be back at our, our one mil next year.
And the end goals, however, time was updated also, so that should be updated.
Oh, good.
The new information. So that'll take about three to five days to hit on their website once it's approved and updated. So between that and the, we're going to open a fresh round of advocates. So. Yeah, we're hopeful.
I agree. Taxpayers are hurting if we're able to save monies. Um, uh, the uncertainty right now is very frightening to people, so. Any other opinions?
I don't like to use the, our, our, our money as a insurance policy. I think we got a lot of capital improvements that we've been talking about for years and years. I think we got an opportunity to use that for capital improvements instead. And I don't like the idea of saying it's a insurance policy. I'm, I'm at that half a mil. I think it's a savings. I think it answers the questions that I get hit with. Got it. It. There's some infos, there's some infrastructure in the sheriff's department with equipment and stuff like that. And maybe even in, in enhanced training, training that we haven't done in years or at all. I think there's available out there. This money will bring it.
I, I agree with some of the things that you just said there, Commissioner Scott, but you don't feel like, feel like collecting point five is collecting on services that haven't been provided because last year we collected the one full mil. And after I just read that, that, um, millage.
Well, the projected, the projected fund balance is less than half. Now, he's, he has said that, that, that's modest. But if, if, uh, to project, uh, if it was four fifty, then it would be half. Okay, so we've used more than, we've used more than half to do what we've done this year.
We have.
And only in nine months.
But by looking at this village.
Hey, I'm, I, my opinion stands. My opinion stands. It's fine. I'm just one out of five.
Would you go to like, uh, point three five mark?
He said three seven five.
Three seven five, which is splitting the, the difference between the half and your quarter. I think that's a good compromise.
I'll go on the point three five. Are you good with that, Commissioner Serrick?
Good.
You guys are good with it?
Yes. A little extra cushion. You won't have that insurance requirement, insurance policy as much.
And do you have all of that?
I do.
So now what do I have to do?
There's a motion on the table right now.
Amendment is more.
Point three seven five.
Point three five, you said?
I'll go three five. I said three seven five.
No question.
So you're, you're mending your. Yeah, she's, she's, okay. I'll go three five.
So what is your motion then entail then? Because we've been talking three different.
I know we have.
Talk slow, please.
Talk slow. Didn't hear good on this side.
Yes, slow and loud.
My notes, it looks like you would reduce MSU extension mileage to point zero seven three one five.
By half.
Veterans would be at zero. And road patrol would be at point three five.
And we're leaving Act two fourteen as it's correct. That's what I have. Okay.
So I have to.
Everything else is as presented.
So those three adjustments need to be in the motion.
They would be. So the motion would need to be amended to think also justice, and that would also include.
The point seven three one five. The only issue, I don't know, I go that many digits.
All right. So can we round up to point zero seven three two?
Yeah.
Point zero seven three two?
Yeah.
Uh, that would also mean the total levy in the paragraph right above that list of the villages would change. Um, not able to do that in my head right off, but I'll change that number as well to whatever this total equals. I could probably just do it.
Oh, it's got nine point eight three six.
Well, it's not aging because I might need to dinner one day. They might have to deliver me dinner. Do we have an amended motion?
He's adding these figures right now.
Oh, geez. I want to comment how, how well the budget was put together and on time, it, ahead of time. And we weren't down to the last day and wondering if somebody had to come down out of the.
Nine, six, four, seven, five.
That's what I got.
Nine point, for total county levy of nine point six four seven five mils, including, okay, authorized levies for general fund operations and special purpose villages. So that's your.
It is.
I'll support that.
Nine point six four seven five, six and MSU to point zero seven three two, and road patrol to point two five.
Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ron Vaughn?
Yes.
Brad Newbecker?
Yes.
Jenny David?
Yes.
Yeah.
Craig Scott?
Yes.
Mark Serbrook? Okay, hold on.
I was the last one to talk.
Approve the resolution to approve the general appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-two as presented with the adjustments of the veterans, MSU and road patrol villages.
Yes.
Do I need the nine point six four seven?
Yes, you would.
Great. Yeah, I'm doing some stuff, my train's. Are we good?
Yes, now we are.
Item eight, the resolution to approve various contracts for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. This resolution is sponsored by the county administrator. The county purchasing procedure policy requires that all contracts over five thousand be formally approved by the board of commissioners. Numerous contracts are routine continuations of existing, existing contracts. This resolution would authorize approval and payment of certain listed contracts as budgeted. Tim?
We solicited departments to find out what contracts are out there that would fit this description. Uh, it's a much smaller list than I thought, and it may be smaller than that. So you see, five, or we've got five contracts listed. Four of those you see a dollar amount. We are including the microfilm license registered deeds because we don't know what that total is going to be. See, it's four cents per image. It may or may not hit the five thousand number. Uh, we're just being safe and including it here. Um, you had a number of other contracts listed last year, but they fall under the five thousand amount, so we don't need to approve those uh, as part of this resolution. Uh, so that's, that's where it is. Those five, uh, three with registered deeds, two with the sheriff. They were all under five thousand on the, on the maintenance.
Building and serving an evaluation. Okay, great.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted as presented. Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Serrick with support from Commissioner Newbecker to approve the resolution to approve various contracts for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Is there any discussion?
I'd point out that this isn't the last opportunity. If one of those were to come back, it overfired. Bring it here as a separate resolution standalone. Um, this is just intended to catch the ones we know about.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Brad Newbecker?
Yes.
Jenny David?
Yes.
Greg Scott?
Yes.
Mark Serbrook?
Yes.
Ron Vaughn?
Yes.
Item eight, C, resolution to approve annual compensation for non-judicial countywide elected officials. I'm getting that. Um, this resolution is sponsored by the county administrator to increase the salary level for non-judiciary countywide elected officials by two percent for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. This increase is consistent with that approved for non-union employees in the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget. The resolution also extends employment benefits as provided to non-union county employees to these officials. Tim?
Motion to pass the resolution. Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Serrick to approve the annual compensation of non-judicial countywide elected officials. Do you have anything to add to that?
I'm just, there is a statutory requirement. It says if this resolution is approved, that these wages will not be reduced uh, below these numbers for the term of the elected official. So through, what, twenty-four, I think is the next election for them. Uh, so this would now set the, the base, if you will, for each of these.
This is for the county clerk, the drain commissioner, the prosecuting attorney, the register of deeds, the sheriff and the treasurer, correct?
Yes.
By looking at this, and, and I don't disagree with, with wage increases, however, you know, looking at the clerk, the treasurer, the sheriff, them are all brand new positions since January is when they took office. So it hasn't been a full year that they've been in this position. So given a raise to this prior to being in a position for a year is, is, what's your guys' thoughts on that?
We're doing it for, we're doing it, sorry.
Go ahead. I'm asking for it.
We're, we're doing it for the union employees. If you're a new hire, you're getting the two percent that we negotiated, so I don't, I think it's only fair.
That's what I'm asking for, what?
We're giving the increase to the office, not to the person.
Yep.
The person does not work for us. We do not, if, if we, we do not, um, uh, uh, what's the word? We don't review the performance of the person and then do this. Well, this is, this is.
So the wage for the office, not.
That's, that's all it is.
Not the person that's in the, in the seat.
That's all it is.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Our, our non-elected department heads, now that'd be different. But the elected officials that we're setting in a position for the position or setting them.
A wage for the position? Is that what you meant?
Yeah, I'm starting just.
Like, like they stated, i- it's for the position, it's not for the person.
Okay.
So.
Commissioner Newbecker?
Again, that, that's, I agree with that. It's for the position. Um, I'm, I guess, um, on the fence here. I, we, we did, uh, give some, uh, significant raises to the union and, uh, command staff and, and such. Um, the only thing that I'll, I'll just point out is, uh, we did just give, uh, these positions a pretty significant wage increase. Um, was it two years ago? Uh, by about, I think, what was it, five percent? Can you remember?
I don't. I can tell you all speak up for myself and say that I have earned it.
So have I.
Guys, we're, this is. This is just this. Guys, I wanted to hear everybody's opinion. This is just discussion. That's, that's what this is amongst board members, so.
Yeah, uh, again, you know.
I think I'm going to bump beyond.
I think it's proportional compared to, uh, what everybody else is.
Those wages were when they were brought to us. Those wages were brought, I think, um, if I remember correctly, uh, Ladonna brought them too, and they were substantially lower um, compared to, uh, surrounding counties. Um, I don't have that information. I looked, but they were substantially lower, and that's when that, that, uh, uh, pay hike occurred. So I, I agree with this. Again, I wanted everybody's opinions and I wanted it out there. That's why I asked. But, um, I think we're sitting okay budgetary wise, um, right now to, to do this. We, we may be in a different situation next year. So that's my opinion. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Jenny David?
Yes.
Greg Scott?
Yes.
Mark Serbrook?
Yes.
Ron Vaughn?
Yes.
Brad Newbecker?
Yes.
Motion carries eight D, resolution to approve a contract to provide indigent counsel. This resolution is sponsored by the county administrator, the thirty-fourth circuit court, family division, and the Ogama County probate court. By statute, in constitution must provide legal counsel to juveniles charged with criminal offenses who are indigent. To reduce costs and provide consistent and efficient legal services for children, Hess County has historically contracted with attorneys to provide this service. This resolution would authorize a contract to provide indigent counsel by five local attorneys as sponsored by the courts as a total cost not to exceed a hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred dollars.
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Serbrook, um, to approve the resolution, uh, geez, to approve a contract to provide indigent counsel. Is there any discussion?
May I ask what they got paid a month last year?
Oh, I do. Give me just a second. Last year? It, it was less. Um, there is roughly, I believe, about ten thousand dollars difference, uh, increase this year. But that ten thousand dollars is going to be provided through the state through a grant, uh, because of the new, uh, requirement for seventeen-year-olds uh, no longer being put through the adult court.
So that number is going to go up with them, with that, correct?
Yes.
Pretty significantly.
Yes.
When does that take effect?
Already, I believe.
Uh, well, this contract would take effect Friday.
Yeah, but I mean.
The age change.
I, I'm not sure. I know the funds are already in the pipeline with the county, so it's, it's probably happened.
Any further discussion? Are you looking for that, Tim, or?
I am.
Well, this is partially funded from the state too.
Right.
Just all.
We have to do this, so.
There's, yes, and there's a cap on it. There's, there's a cap on it and everything, so.
I was just curious. Okay, so last year, uh, here, where is the total? Last year's total was ninety-seven thousand.
It's up thirteen thousand.
Can we get a real call?
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker. Jenny David.
Yes. Item eight E, resolution to extend the collective bargaining agreement with Teamsters Local two one four Court Employees Unit. This resolution is sponsored by the negotiation committee. Teamsters Local two one four eighty second district court, probate court, and Ogumah County Board of Commissioners are parties to a collective bargaining agreement. Which is scheduled to expire on September thirtieth, twenty twenty one. The parties are engaged in collective bargaining negotiations towards. Toward a new collective bargaining agreement and desire to extend expiration of the current collective bargaining agreement to October thirty first, twenty twenty one. If approved, all terms and conditions of the current collective bargaining agreement will be in full force and effect and will be adhered. To during the extension period. Consistent with provisions of the Public Employment Relations Act, the successor collective bargaining agreement will not. Include retroactive wage or benefit levels or amounts that are greater than those in effect on the expiration date of the collective bargaining agreement.
Make a motion, the resolution be adapted as presented. This part.
Motion from Commissioner Serbrook with support from Commissioner Newbecker. Discussion. Tim, can you explain this?
While we aren't, uh, quite at the point of, uh, tentative agreement, so, uh, rather than let the contract simply expire and let, uh, PA fifty four take effect. Uh, as a gesture of goodwill, the committee, the bargaining committee is proposing that we simply extend their contract another thirty days. Um, we have made clear that we don't have any intention of coming back to you and asking for any further extensions. We are down to very few matters left. And I would suggest that if we do get to the end of October and we've not yet, uh. Come to terms that we are probably at that point on at impasse, and then I'll be back here with an explanation of what happens next.
And we're doing the same thing with the next one as well, which is the corrections unit, correct?
It's exactly the same thing, yes.
So can we make a motion and combine those two?
So let's keep them separate.
Okay. Any further discussion? I mean, there's no downside to doing this, correct?
There's not.
Okay, it's just standard. Guys will have an agreement.
Not really standard, but, um. It, as he said, it's in good faith that we do this. I'm kind of reluctant, but.
Because?
Well, because they've come to us late. And they dragged us on.
I mean, it's good, okay.
Yeah, they've come to us late. They were one of the last ones. The next, the next one we agree on was the last one. And we've given very good offers and it's dragging on.
So what happens if we say no to this?
When the contract will expire, uh, after tomorrow. Act fifty four will take effect, which means, uh, any increase in health insurance that occurs after. After Thursday would be borne by the employees. There will be no pay increases whatsoever, uh, not even step increases and, uh. Think we would also, um. Be in a position where currently they have the, uh, ability to go to an arbitrator. If we have, uh. Grievance that that gets that far, that would be suspended as well. We would, we would not, uh. Go to arbitration, so they would lose that. Uh, and that would be the case until we got a successor agreement.
So is there a reason? Do you have a valid reason of why there has been, uh, tardiness and?
I cannot. I can only say that we did contact the union back in June and contacted all of our bargaining units in June. And, um, uh, asked to begin bargaining at that point. Uh, I can't say that for the Teamsters, their business agent is spread very thin right now. They, um, also are having issues with staffing. And, uh, so he's got a number of other, uh, units that he's bargaining for at the same time. Uh, is that our problem? The answer is no. However, I think we need to recognize that, uh. Well, the times that we have met, we have made progress. And like I said, we are down to the very final issues. Uh, it is enough. It's not twenty pages. We're we're down to just like two.
Yeah, we're in each group.
Well, when there's a deadline, there's a deadline.
Well, I understand, uh, but that, uh, again, with the message being that this will likely be the only extension. I I think that's also. Being very clear to the unions that we don't intend to drag this out for months and months.
You two that were on the committee.
I'll vote for it, but. I'm not the happiest camper with the.
Commissioner Serbrook.
I think it's.
He made a motion.
Yeah, I I think it's appropriate.
Because?
I. As Tim said, we are real, real close. And they've been put on notice. If we pass this. It's not going to happen again. There's not going to be no extension. You're open the wind, so.
Okay, anything else you do?
No, that's it.
Commissioner Newbecker.
That's fine.
Good.
Roll call vote.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Uh, resolution to extend the collective bargaining agreement with Teamsters Local two one four corrections unit. It's the same language with the change of the corrections unit.
I'll make a motion, the resolution be adapted as presented. With the same discussion.
Commissioner Serback, any support?
I'll support it.
Support from Commissioner Newbecker. Any further discussion?
We are real close with this group.
Oh, then you guys need to, then you're bringing that back to us in a closed session?
We have a closed session scheduled yet tonight, and we will bring you up to eight.
Oh, perfect. Okay, roll call vote.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Motion carries, uh, eight G claims. What was that?
One claim.
Very odd. I printed it off.
Yeah, this is for the jail medical, the new jail medical contract, um, and they are seeking their first. First payment, which is actually Friday, uh, is the first of the month, and that's what we agreed to in the contract, uh, scheduled. They haven't paid on the first of the month. And that's what you see. It's only one item.
Thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty five dollars.
Right. I would make a motion that we pay the amount of thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty five dollars to T M D correctional Services. Support.
We've come, uh, a motion from Commissioner Serbrook with support from Commissioner Vaughn to approve to pay the amount of thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty five dollars. Any discussion?
I just, for why is this here? You you have set up, uh, internal controls so that you approve all these claims when they. Uh, get to a certain threshold number, and that's why it's here. And I I appreciate that the, uh. Contractor in this case has expressed some frustration with the procedures. Uh, but the bottom line is this is the way to do it. This is how your internal controls keep. Think bad things from happening, and it's it's very necessary that you see these and approve them. Uh, so I just want to be on record saying that. Again, I know the, uh, vendor was a little upset about this, but they're a new vendor to the county as well. They getting used to how we do business. I I think everything will be smooth now because it's going to be just simply part of the claims process and. Will be handled normally.
They were upset about the timeframe, correct?
Frame, uh, you know, we we've turned this around in roughly thirty days. Uh, you know, we had a contract. And, uh, extensive contract, and yeah, we still meeting the goal of, uh, having this in place on October one, which was our intention. Uh, so, uh, hopefully this will be the last, uh, bump that they experience. Everything will be routine from here forward.
Roll call vote.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Greg Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Motion carries any unfinished business, Tim?
No.
Item ten, general public comment.
Yeah.
Is there anybody in the room with a public comment? Anybody on the phone with public comment? Anybody on the phone with public comment?
Uh, yes, once again, this is Eric David. Um, talked to you guys a little bit ago. I just want to make it clear. I know you already voted on this, but I do not agree with what you're doing. Um, as far as the the levy on the the veterans' millage. Um, the two fourteen millage that Jeff has spoke about that you guys have decided to levy, that's the one. That only allows for wartime veterans. There's a period of time from nineteen seventy five to nineteen ninety one. That's sixteen years that we will not offer emergent funds. Whether Jeff says, yes, we help every veteran or not. There is nothing there. The other millage that doesn't seem to be under a public act at all. I cannot find anything, and I've been doing a lot of research last couple of weeks, and I wish I would have had more time to talk to you guys before all this came. Um, said and done. There's nothing on there. It says that you can't help peacetime veterans. There's other counties which I've reached out to with very, very good veterans offices. That use that money in several different ways. There's also a pub, uh, a possibility of. Taking away those two villages and putting them under one millage. Under public act one ninety two, which has not been mentioned. Um, that allows pretty much our offices to do whatever the heck we want with that money. Um, and I apologize if I sound a little, uh, heated, but I am. Um, there's a lot of stuff in our office that that money could go to as well. We use a copier that literally sits out in a common area. Of the annex building, and we're printing off BD two fourteens, um, applications, medical information that anybody can go pick up. That has personal information on it. Um, so there's, there's definitely stuff in our office. We could use that money for two to bring us up to speed. Um, again, and the emergent funds issue under public act two fourteen, uh, there's, there's a big gray area with, uh. Emergent funds. Um, I've heard just in three months that I've been there, I've heard peacetime veterans turned down. For assistance. I've heard people that need a new water softener who's never, never even asked for assistance turned down. We should not have that money sitting there. We should have probably a a balance of about a hundred thousand dollars sitting there, but, um. I I I don't agree with it. I just want it known that I do not agree with this, and I wish we could talk a little bit more about this before you guys make a decision. But if you're going to levy one millage and not the other, I would suggest that you. Don't levy two fourteen and and levy the other one. So again, sorry if I sound a little heated. I'm not, I'm not, um. Overly familiar with county politics yet, but, uh, short three months, I'm trying to do my best, and I think, uh. If you, if you give me a chance, we could.
Thank you, sir. Unfortunately, your three minutes are up, but I thank you for that.
Can I ask a question to him?
Uh. Mr. David.
Yes.
There is a commissioner that would like to ask you a question. Are you okay with that?
Uh, Craig Scott, uh, are you aware of the fund balance that's in that account now?
Yes, I am. Like I said, I was aware about it a month, a month ago.
Okay, all right. I just want to know that.
Chance to nip that in the butt before we got to this point, but, uh, I've been there a very short time, and I I didn't get a chance to do it before we, um, hit volcanic, um. Status, so.
Thank, thank you. Is there any other public comment? Anybody on the phone with public comment? Item eleven, closed session. County Attorney General Mien, Greg Mien would, has requested a closed session to review legal matters. MCL one five point two six eight. Also, a closed session is necessary to discuss strategy and negotiations. Connected with the negotiations of collective bargaining agreements. No other business will be considered after the closed session. Can I have a motion to go to closed session?
Close session on CL fifteen point two six eight E and MCL fifteen point two six eight E.
We have a motion. We have a motion from Commissioner Serbrook with support from Commissioner Newbecker to go into closed session. Mr. Booth. And then we're going to go into closed session. And again, there'll be no more, uh, business when we come out of closed session. Sir.
Two copies.
Oh, shoot. Sorry, sir, you gotta go.
Give the man some time to get out.
Do you need help? I'll help. Have a motion.
Hold on.
What?
Motion to adjourn.
We need a motion and a second to come back into.
Yeah, I'll make a mo, I'll make a motion that we come back into open session.
No second then.
Okay.
I'll make, I'll move.
Your bridges.
Full call, can you take that one?
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn. Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig.
Yeah.
Scott.
Can I adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Are you sure you're okay with that? Motion to adjourn. Where adjourn? Have a good night, everybody. Stay well.
Hi.
Cover your mouth.
I can wait.
Hey.
Wash your hands.
Have a safe flight. What airline are you flying on? Okay.
I can do that, though, if everybody else can do it.